Good evening, North Las Vegas, oh, is that me, or is it the North Las Vegas City Council and Redevelopment Agency, welcome to our meeting this evening. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and end of the Redevelopment Agency meeting, and one at the beginning and the end of the City Council meeting. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside in the main entrance where you entered, or to my left, you're right at the podium rail. Please give the card to City Attorney, she sits right here, Ms. Jackie here, and she will run that up here. We call you speak, we ask that you limit your comments, and we're in three minutes, and we avoid repetition. Now, just to let you know, we're going to go into a meeting, we're going to do a slight meeting, it's called Redevelopment Meeting, and then we're going to get back to the main meeting. So, if you don't have any business here with the Redevelopment Agency, don't think we're missing you at the general meeting here for City Council. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by Reverend Michael Boykin of the Second Baptist Church of Las Vegas. Following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
On behalf of Pastor Clayton D. Moore, the pastor of the Second Baptist Church, I am Reverend Michael Boykin, one of Associate Ministers and Assistant to Pastor Moore. He sends his heartfelt apologies for not being here today. He had a prior engagement, and he asked me to stand here instead, and I thank the Board, the Council members for allowing me to be here today for this invocation. Let us now go to God in prayer. Our eternal God and Father, we come before Thee because You are worthy to be praised and thanked. Now, Lord God, we ask in Jesus' name that You will manifest Yourself at this meeting. Father God, we ask Your blessings upon each member here today. Father, we realize that their job is an arduous job, and we ask, Father God, if You would be so kind to just crown their heads, from crowning their head to the soles of their feet with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and fortitude. Father, for they have been chosen to chose these, Your people, and we ask, Lord God in Jesus' name, that You will allow them to do that job to the glory of Your will, not for self or for vain glory, but that Your people, Your community, Your city, Your homes will be made the better as a result of what You have done through them. Thank You right now for what You're going to do, and for those who are under the sound of My voice, Lord, I pray Your blessings upon them as well. Thank You for this time of coming together to make a difference in the lives of people in this community. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Pastor, would you like to give a little plug for your church here real quick? There might be some Baptists in here.
Well, I would love to. Our model, our mission at Second Baptist is to honor God by leading people to become disciples of Jesus Christ. We are designed, we are impelled, to tell people about our Lord and Savior on a daily basis, not only by word, but our lives. Second Baptist is one of the oldest African-American churches, you well know, in Las Vegas, and I am a proud member there since November of 2002. I have lived in North Las Vegas since I moved here from California, and I must say, I am extremely proud to say I am, I love North Las Vegas. There's other cities that we could have chosen to live in, but North Las Vegas is our home. And Second Baptist invites each and every one of you, if you don't have a church home, or if you do have a church home, please come by and visit with us, worship with us, not just whenever it's election time, but just to come in, let us see your faces, let us shake your hand, let us love you the way God wants us to love you. Second Baptist is growing, it's thriving, and we are privileged and honored to have a man of God by the, by the name of Clayton D. Moore. He is leading us and directing us by the Word of God, through the Word of God, and I just want to ask each and every one of you, please be in prayer for us as we make this transition to go higher, that we might enhance God's kingdom and live according to how He wants us to live. We are living in some turbulent times, as you well know, and I don't mean it in speeching, but we are in need of prayer. We are in need of earnest prayer, for the Bible says, "The prayers of the righteous availeth much." Let us all pray, one for another and for each other. Thank you so much for this privilege, thank you so much for this honor, and on behalf of Pastor Moore, I humbly, humbly, gratefully thank each and every one of you. Thank you, God bless you.
I think the Chair will take a motion to call them the First Baptist Church now. That was a first-class lesson in what we're trying to accomplish here. Thank you very much, very much, and you're, you're welcome to leave whenever you want to, you can stay at the council meeting, but thank you for coming and blessing us today. Thank you.
Mayor, I just might want to add that congratulations, you just celebrated your eighty-fifth, eightieth church anniversary, and we were able to participate in that, so thank you for inviting us.
Moving on to council items. Oh, no, no, tonight, we have a presentation, pardon me, for Business of the Month led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill, so we'll go ahead for this presentation. Thank you.
This is print on... This is print, am I there? Okay. This is print on steroids. I'm going to make sure I read this tonight, because the people receiving this award, appreciation award tonight, aside from being Award Four, I have to tell you, they are the nicest people I have ever met, and that's a true statement. Awful lot of nice people over here, but I got to note them when they were looking for the, going through the application process for the dispensary here, and that was probably one of the highlights of my interview, so to speak, but the fact of knowing who they are to this day is a privilege to me. So, I'm going to make sure, so don't get embarrassed, even though it looks like it's long, Mayor, it's not really long. Dr. Florence Jamison has spent her life dedicated to health care and to the family she attended, and to families. She attended the University of California, Los Angeles Medical School, where she earned her medical degree and finished her residency in obstetrics and gynecology at Cedar Sinai Hospital in Los Angeles. In 1985, she opened her first private practice in Las Vegas and has spent the last 27 years caring for women and babies coming into the world. She also has dedicated herself to the welfare of the medical profession as past president of the Clark County Medical Society and as an officer of the Nevada Medical Association, current president-elect. Dr. Jamison is founder and CEO of the Volunteers in Medicine of Southern Nevada, and she has a clinic right over here, the south part of MLK in West Las Vegas. That's a free clinic dedicated to providing medical services to the uninsured who will not otherwise be able to afford it. Prior to starting Volunteers in Medicine, she helped open up a clinic at the Juvenile Justice Center of Southern Nevada to care for the incarcerated young girls who would otherwise have no care. She has been blessed by the joy of marrying her childhood sweetheart, Gard Frank Jamison, and raising her two children, Michael and Julia. With her medical practice already established and her children raised, Dr. Jamison now devotes her time to the Volunteers in Medicine service while still in private practice and delivering babies. That's one half of the team that are here tonight. The other half, Frank Gard Jamison, received his PhD from Pacifica Graduate Institute in 2005. He teaches Chinese and Indian philosophy in the Philosophy Department at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. Prior to his tenure at UNLV, Mr. Jamison spent 25 years practicing as a certified public accountant and director of the financial planning at Piercey Bowler, Taylor &amp; Kern. He is the author of three books, Footprints on the Sands of Time, The Story of His Mentor, Dr. Raymond M. Alf, Pantheon, Our Mystic Moment, an Ancient Greek Tale that Illuminates Our Current Predicament and Monkey, you're going to have to help me with this, Our Mystic Moment, The Grand Epic of China. Mr. Jamison helped found and chair the Boards of the Children's Advocacy Alliance, the Interfaith Council of Southern Nevada, and the Nevada Institute for Spirituality in Health Care. He is the treasurer and co-founder of VMSN, Volunteers in Medicine, Southern Nevada. Mr. Jamison also helped found the Nevada Community Foundation. Mr. Jamison also serves on the Board of the Still Point Center for Spiritual Development and, Isaac, you want to grab that?
Yeah.
Alf Museum of Life in Claremont, California, and is a minister at the Grace Community Church in Boulder City, Nevada. Mr. Jamison has a BA in Religious Studies from Stanford University, 1975, and Mr. Jamison's greatest joy is his wife Florence and their two children, Michael and Julia. Did I cover that pretty much? We could have been talking all day on this, there was a lot more, I just ended it out. Come on up, come on down, as they say. We do this, we rotate, we do this once a month, but, you know, not very often do we have a business in our community that actually takes part of their, their resources and their profits to give back to the community, to nonprofits. It's really an exceptional thing to do, and we appreciate you having, being a part of North Las Vegas. You're part of the family now, Florence. So, on behalf, on behalf of City of North Las Vegas, this certificate of recognition presented May 4th, and I have to tell you, this is my mother's birthday, 2022, to Tree of Life Dispensary located at 150 East Centennial Parkway, Suite 114, for your outstanding service to the community by donating 70% of your profits to various causes. Thank you for being a great community partner, and of course, it's signed by the Mayor, Councilman Black, Councilmember Ron, Councilwoman, Councilwoman woman, Goyens Brown. I was going to call you Pam for a second. All right. Florence, Gard, thank you so much. Just can't really tell her that.
I just want to say thank you so much. My middle name is Access to Healthcare, and we have between us probably a dozen nonprofits, as many of you know, but once you start all these nonprofits, there's these recurrent bills. So, I want to thank all of you for making it possible to have the Tree of Life Dispensary here. We just want you to know that it will be, as you may have already seen, just one of the most safest dispensaries possible, that as, as, that if there are any issues, we will always address them so that you can be so proud, that should people, sometimes they're worried about concerns, but from a medical point of view, it is much safer than alcohol or any other drug on the streets. My own brother was very ill with heroin, and if I ever thought there was a concern that this was a gateway, I would never have gone down that path. But we have a huge number of people who prefer cannabis to alcohol, it's much safer than alcohol, and if anyone does have an addiction problem, one of, one of our promises is to help those people, so we will have help for them. So, we just want you to know how excited, but all the credit of the hard work of this organization, actually, the administration and building it and the know-how, goes to our team, Tim and, Tim Lasat and Jen are CEO and COO, so I want them to actually receive this, but I do have to say, it originally started with our mayor, who gave us a reference letter on our application to the state, and I think he's probably one of the only people who, early on, could see the benefits to the community and to all the nonprofits such as healthcare in this community. So, he stood up for us when many people way back when did not, and then, when we came into your district, Churchill, and you were so kind to help us in every way make this a reality, and we are going to be giving every part of our 70%, every penny back to the community, which we hope in the future will be substantial, will be hundreds of thousands of dollars for the homeless, to feed the hungry, and to help in every way where the need is great.
I just want to say one more thing, which we would be, thank you for the city of North Las Vegas for helping us with the work of Volunteers in Medicine in Southern Nevada. We've been a ally and a partner consistently for many years, and we thank you on behalf of each and every patient that you serve. Thank you.
Hello? No, I, we were not going to let you, go ahead and get that, but we've got a few kind words from the council, so let's get a picture. So, before you go, Gard and Florence, just for a second, I met these young people very early on in my career as mayor, and I, a certain affinity took place with his wife, and I was talking, I'm kind of a nosey, like, what nationality are you? You just have this unique European look, you know, and she told me she was an American native, American Indian, and I had never met an American Indian doctor before, you know, and I was very, very proud of you, and then Gard, on the other side, every year calls us up and announces he has like a thousand people, little kids, high school kids, who come together at the Texas Station, and he is a mayor's prayer, and so all the mayors and county commissioners get up there, and we recite a prayer from every religion, and it is such a good interface thing for the children in this community, and so I just want to thank you for not only the business side that you have, but the charitable side you have for the youth in this community, too. So, I'm, you know, I'm very, I'm just, I can't say enough about my trust and my respect for everything you two touch, and I appreciate you, and I know some of the council people that have more to say.
Mayor, one thing I'm very proud of is the city of North Las Vegas was actually one of the leaders here in the state, I think, when we, when we realized, you know, the possible benefits of what was considered, what was once considered an illicit, an illicit subject, an illicit material, something that was, yeah, it was a commodity that, you know, was thought of, and people joked about it, but I think, early on, we realized, I remember the mayor and I talking about this, we realized that there was a potential for someone to come in and turn that into a positive for the community, and you did that. This is very much a North Las Vegas story. I am really proud that you found a home here in the city of North Las Vegas, and I think this is what responsible, what responsible entrepreneurship that you think about someone else is really all about. So, again, you'll always have a home, you're part of the North Las Vegas family, and you're deeply respected, so thank you so very much.
I have to thank both of you, but especially for what you do for women and babies, it just goes beyond saying, because it's very important for women's health and the safety of their children, born and unborn, and what you do to continue to make sure that moms are healthy, so thank you for that. And then, just with your dispensary, I think it's just about educating the public and knowing the ins and outs in this industry and how it can benefit you, both if, whether you use them medicinal purposes or recreational, just be responsible, and I think you're going to do a great job in getting that message out to the community. And you, sir, like the mayor said, just for the prayer breakfasts that I have participated in over the years, the choices that we get to pray over, whichever denomination, they are so moving, and when you have a room full of young people where you can hear a pen drop when a prayer is being read, and you see the emotion on their faces, and they get it, it's just a true experience that I would not trade for the world, so thank you for all you do for our kids and our community.
I would just echo the comments that have been made, and also, thank you for the service that you give in our community, and to me, it's a matter of you focus on the individual, on the one, and the needs of the one, and meet them where they're at, and make sure that they're taken care of, and I think that that, we need more of that in our, in our society today, and you're a medical doctor, and a CPA, and a Chinese professor, and all the things you do, tell us a secret on how you get 26 hours out of the day.
I'd like to take a picture of you two in the center. Where's your little plaque?
Oh, whose has the plaque? There we go.
Thank you. One last, this sentence, for the part first, although we haven't broke people yet, we do have a thing called round up, and the people in the community will be saying that they will round up to the next dollar, and so, even though we haven't got to the big block yet, we have the rounding of money, and for this last month, it is going to, you can just go to the screen.
Yeah, absolutely. Can I, can I come through a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, our, 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 are asked to turn to God in prayer and meditation. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. All of us as council members had an opportunity to, to participate in Teacher Appreciation Week. My colleagues and I visited two of our locations here, that, that we have teachers on the Snuma Project, teaching children from the community. I went down to the Neighborhood Rec Center down here, and then I scooted up to the Silver Mesa Rec Center towards Aliante. And I could tell you that I've never seen children, I went to Catholic school, but I've never seen children so engaged with the teachers, and what a good job that they do. I'm so proud to have them on board with us over here in the city. And I saw that the, the children were very happy, and kind of like sponges, absorbing all of the information that the teachers were preparing for them and showing them. So, I thank them all for, for what they're doing for our next generation over here. Tomorrow, I'll be participating in a lunch and learn at Sun City, Aliante. And the purpose of, the purpose of, the purpose of that is to, to educate or inform the community up there. You know, we have developments going in all over the city. One of the largest ones, aside from Valley Vista and Councilman Black's Ward, is the villages of Tulley Springs. And there was a concern all along with what's going to be built against this east wall of the, of the community there. I could tell you that Mr. Groenauer and D.R. Horton will be up there, and they'll be showing a presentation, slide presentation, and providing lunch up there. I just want to say, you know, on the record, that I personally appreciate Bob going up there with the developer, and informing the community there exactly what will be going in. And I could, I could tell you, because I already have a copy of it, we all got briefed on a little bit yesterday, I think, the day before. It's going to be an amazing community, and I look forward to having this thing in not only just Ward Four, it goes well beyond Ward Four. It's, it's really, it's all about the community and all about our city. And I could say that this community, we were up there, Mayor, you and I were up there yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they received their third award for Community of the Year. The association does a fantastic job up there. It's a beautiful clubhouse, they just renovated it. And if, if you're a senior or going to be a senior, you may want to consider going up there and looking at some of the amenities and the homes up there. Lastly, I'll be taking a tour of Hearts Alive Village. It's an animal clinic over here in North Las Vegas. As you know, just recently, I'm, I have a nonprofit myself, serving our veterans and our military and our first responders. But I'm also a big animal advocate. So, I've been invited to tour this clinic over here. And once again, these are other nonprofits that do amazing work for our little furry friends, who are, in very many cases, like my own little girl, Suki, they're our family. So, I appreciate all that they do, and to let them know, if they're listening, not just them, that I'm here for all of them to try to help them, and our animal friends. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, that award was for the whole Southern Nevada, or associations, or?
No, that award was for Sun City.
For, for all the associations in the, in the region, or just North Las Vegas?
No, it was for Sun Cities.
Yeah, but, but they were number one out of all?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, out of all of the, all of the associations here in Southern Nevada, not just North Las Vegas. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Last Friday, Guy Elementary School, one of the elementary schools in Ward Three, had a school family day. I was invited to participate. Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick, she provided the breakfast, and we teamed up and served breakfast to about 600 students and parents. It was a great event. Came back later in the day, and spent about two and a half hours scooping ice cream sundaes for the students. So, they were all full of sugar for the last couple hours of the school day. It was a great event, and it was awesome to see all the families, parents, grandparents, and kids enjoying the day at, at the school. Also, I want to say how thankful I am for the North Las Vegas Police Department, for their commitment at every level to keep North Las Vegas and its residents safe. And one particular aspect of safety that's very important to me, because I ride a bicycle on a regular basis, is the state law that we have to change lanes for bikes. It's, we're one of six states in the nation that have this law, where you are required to change lanes if there is a lane available, to give the cyclist the entire lane. If there is not a lane available, then you would be required to give a cyclist three feet. Yesterday, North Las Vegas Police Department, the motor officers, motorcycle police, traffic enforcement, teamed up with CCSD, Metro, and I rode my bike up and down Aliante Parkway for about two hours, 22 miles, with two other officers, as we worked to educate and make awareness for this law to keep people safe and allow us to all arrive where we're going together. Thank you.
Sounds cool. Councilwoman Goins-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I'd just like to say thank you to our beautification team, our graffiti team, Republic Service. We had a neighborhood cleanup in Ward Two this morning, in two identified areas, and I also was excited, because I got to paint a fire hydrant this morning. Thank you, Mark, and thank you to Tom for allowing me to do that and brush up on my painting skills. But we left neighborhoods looking very nice and clean with their bulk pickup and things that they did not want. I also participated, I'm on a board with the Chicano's Pro-Lock House, or the NARSA Board, and they had their grand opening of their new facility, right there on the corner of Maryland Parkway and Bonanza. I think that used to be a bank on that corner. And it's just a great partnership with the city, so that we can focus on minority businesses, housing programs, educational components, so just a whole kind of wraparound service with, with that community. And not just in Las Vegas, but Las Vegas in North Las Vegas. And yesterday, my colleague Councilman Barone and I did a changing of the ward at the Rose Garden Senior Complex there on Yale Street. With the redistricting now, we discovered that that facility is in Ward Two now, and so, they requested Popeye's Chicken, and so, we had lots, they had, they had lots of chicken in all the fixings, and we just had a great time talking with the seniors about the progress that we're making in North Las Vegas, and listened to some of their questions and their concerns. So, thank you, Councilman Barone. And another exciting event on May 23rd, since we're talking about Armed Forces, the Armed Forces Chamber, I'm going to host a health fair there. It's going to be 10 o'clock, from 10 to 3 on, I think it's a Monday, May 23rd, at the Martin Luther King Junior Senior Center. And it'll just be health screenings, demonstrations, resources there, and vendors geared for the community and military members. And lastly, we hosted at Nevada Partners. It's called NABO, and it stands for the National Association of Women Business Owners. And we had a great luncheon with women business owners and small business owners, and we had Amanda Payne from the Fifth Street Brewery, and it was just great, because she shared that she's the first Hispanic female to open a brewery, her and her brother. And they also went through our Small Business Connector Program, and you can see the results of what they have done to open that brewery. And if you haven't been there, it's on Mayflower, 60 Mayflower in North Las Vegas, and they do an excellent job with their various beer products. And we also had Jeannie Lauren from the Beauty Society, which is right there in the corner of Simmons and Cheyenne. And it's a mail-order beauty supply place, and they do fantastic business. And they just shared their successes in starting their businesses in North Las Vegas, and some of the struggles that they had to go to, to get their dreams to come true. And then also, Chief of Staff Rebecca Gibson shared her ideals of, of being an African, a woman of color, an African-American woman, in the title that she is in, and how she made her successes happen. And I shared some of the, the things that I had gone through over my life. And so, just a very powerful luncheon, and it was just great for women to share their successes and that are business owners. So, thank you for all we're doing for minority business owners and women business owners in North Las Vegas, and our Small Business Connector.
Thank you. You all are doing so much in your areas. I know our community is better off for this leadership we have. Thank you for all you do in our community. So, what we're going to do, we're going to adjourn this meeting for a second. We're going to go into redevelopment agency meeting, and then we'll come back to the general meeting. So, I'm going to adjourn to Redevelopment Agency at this time, this time. Ms. Goins-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. We are moving on to the Redevelopment Agency First Public Forum. Now is the time to speak on any posted Redevelopment Agency items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or written comments?
No, we do not.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public forum, and let's move on to the Redevelopment Agency agenda.
Item one, approve Redevelopment Agency Regular Meeting Agenda of May 4, 2022. Chairwoman Goins-Brown and agency members, it's our recommendation to approve the Redevelopment Agency Agenda as published.
Thank you. With that, I will call a motion for approval of the Redevelopment Agency Meeting Agenda.
So moved.
Moving on to the consent agenda?
Chairwoman Agency Members, the consent agenda consists of item, of one item, and it's our recommendation to approve as published.
Thank you, and I'll call for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
And that motion passes also. Another quick meeting. So, we are at the Second Public Forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or written comments?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, with that, I will close the Second Public Forum, and I will now adjourn this meeting of the Redevelopment Agency. Back to the City Council and to Mayor Lee.
Thank you very much. We are going to move on to the City Council's First Public Forum now. This time is set aside for comment on posted agenda items. Items listed on the public hearing section of the agenda will have their own public hearing when they are heard. So, if you want to speak on any items on today's agenda, other than on the public hearings item, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do you have any blue cards on posted agenda items, written comments? I see two of them. I think you're going to want to talk on item 23, so I don't think you're going to want to talk right now. Is that correct? That's, you're, okay, so we're going to, so outside of those two that we know you're going to speak on item 23, is there anyone else who would like to talk on anything? So, we are going to close the public forum and move on to the agenda.
Item three, approve City Council Regular Meeting Agenda for May 4, 2022. Mayor and Council staff recommends approval of the agenda as published.
Thank you. Chair will take a motion. If there's any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as published.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items nine through, four through 19. It's our recommendation to approve as published.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve? Move for approval. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Item number 20, set future public hearing dates. Madam City Clerk, I so direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Yes, Mayor, so noted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearings, item number 21.
Item number 21, approve VAC-03-2022, Goldfield and North Fifth Street, for applicant Harmony Homes to vacate property right-of-way, APN 124-27-599-010, generally located east of Azure, between Goldfield and North Fifth Street.
Thank you very much. This is, we're going to open this to public hearing right now. Are you here to make a presentation?
I'm just here to represent the item.
Okay, go ahead and name an address.
Liz Olson, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant for Harmony Homes, just the required vacation in conjunction with the previously approved tentative map, and happy to answer any questions.
And you're Liz?
I am.
Ms. Olson. Great, okay, I've got you. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm complete. I'm done.
What's that?
I'm, I'm done. Sorry if you couldn't hear me. I was just here to represent the application, happy to answer any questions.
Just to vacate, okay, I thought it was a longer process than that. Counsel, do any comments or questions to this vacation on this? She's saying that, nobody's saying that. Let me, stay close, let me have Ms. Lino Cruzaro, are you here? Is there, sir, would you like to come forward now? I, sorry if I didn't say your name right, but I, I can see it's Lino for sure.
Yeah, we have a apartment complex there, and they said they have, they want to take over the easement that we have, and they call it a right-of-way. It's not a right-of-way, it's an easement that's on our property, and they want to build the homes there. So, if they do that, it's going to mess up our side there.
You know more about it.
Say your name for the record.
Your name for the record?
No, no, you, ma'am, you, ma'am. We've got his card.
I'm sorry, Cynthia Curtis with Stout Management. We manage Harding Gardens, the property that sits next to this Harmony Homes lot, and the owners would like to appeal the easement for a few reasons. One is, the property is completely secure with the gate and the community, and we're concerned that bringing activity to the property will affect the perimeter wall and the quiet enjoyment of the residents that live in that property. It's a boutique community, only 80 homes, 80 apartment homes, and they are concerned of releasing any of their property or easement for Harmony Homes.
So, Mark, or, I mean, maybe report to staff for just a second. Do you have a response or report to that, or do you need a little time to study that out?
I might. I'm not aware of any easements. The only thing I'm aware about is the, the vacation for this portion of the right-of-way, which is a 30-foot right-of-way section. So, I'm a little, not unsure of the details of what they're concerned.
Can I get, can I get the, the applicant to come up just for a sec? Maybe there's some education here we could get.
Yeah, I can show you some, it'll probably help on a map here. Okay, so our property is located in the highlighted portion here, and the apartments are located here. What we're requesting is to vacate this portion of right-of-way that's within the Harmony Homes development. So, it has nothing to do with the adjacent apartments next door. We originally had a tentative map approved on the highlighted portion, and this was coming back to vacate this portion that was internal to our site.
How do you, sir, would you like to respond to that? Are you feeling comfortable with what you've just heard, Mr. Lino?
Let me just, if you don't mind. Initially, the paperwork that we received...
But you'll have to speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry. Initially, the paperwork that we received, I believe, shows the easement on the wall. We were asked to...
Wait, can you push that into the screen just a little bit higher?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
There we go.
Apologize. Originally, the, the letter that we received...
Move the whole wall in.
Is to move this wall of the community owner. And that's what we thought we were referring here today, is to release this wall or access to the community on the, I believe, the east side of the wall. Now, we're talking about, and tell me if it's changed, but now we're talking about a driveway inside your, inside Harmony Homes community, which is different from the paperwork we originally received, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
So, with that being said, as long as there is nothing encroaching on the owner's property or affecting the surrounding perimeter wall, there is no concerns at this time, I believe, correctly, Lino? This was a concern first that we were notified, I'm not here.
Yeah, because they're going to move the whole wall over.
Correct, correct. So, I just want to be clear that that, that's, this is not going to be affected based on the first letter we received.
Could we see your map again, and not their map? I want to see your map for just a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they're kind of in conjunction here. But yes, so this has nothing to do with our eastern property line over here. It's just this one portion here, which is shown on our vacation exhibit, which was submitted with our application here in the middle of the site. And the apartments are located over here.
Now, with that, with that clarification, Lino, am I correct to say that there is not a concern, as long as it does not affect?
As long as they don't move that wall, yeah.
Right, okay.
Now, before you guys leave, I'd like to turn it over to staff for just a second. City Manager, how do you want to respond and make sure this happens properly for them?
I think one, one, oh, one question that, that we do have, is I'm not sure what letter was, was sent to the residents, but it appears, you know, there is a question of what it's, if there is something else dealing with the wall. Because clearly, this is about this right-of-way, but do we know anything about the wall, Mark?
I might be able to help add to this. Not long ago, Planning Commission at least approved a new planned unit development for this property that actually surrounds that gas facility there. And from what I remember from the preliminary development plan that was submitted and presented to the Planning Commission, it does not have any impact on the properties to the west. There is no movement of the wall. There is the vacation that's proposed as part of the agenda tonight. I believe there will be another vacation that would be proposed in the future for a portion of the property on this site, but that's next to the church, that's just south of the multifamily develop, dwelling, existing multifamily developments there. But it won't impact the property line, and it shouldn't impact any walls. As a matter of fact, as part of normal development, we would require, you know, some sort of buffering or landscaping as well there, so it shouldn't impact the wall at all.
So, what we're hearing up here is the church and your property on the record is clean, and there's not an issue of, you know, towards your property in the west, your east side. Are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Could we have you come up just for one more second? So, I appreciate you, Liz, and so, let me ask if there's any other comment. I know that, that, is it that, the gas facility, is that Southwest Gas or whatever that's around in, that, where, next to that easement? Is that what that is, Richard?
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, so...
Yeah, I need the map again.
Here.
Okay, so my question to you is on public discussion here. You're going to, on the very front of that property, going up, is that, what street is that, Richard, right there? Is that North Fifth? No, that's not Fourth, that's Azure, and with that street going up in front of the property, there's a little, yeah, there's a little blit where the sidewalk is not going to have to be installed by you guys, correct?
Along Fifth?
Along Fifth.
Correct.
So, what happens to that strip of 50-foot of property? Have you worked this out with Southwest Gas? Or you just, it's up to us, it's going to have no continuation of sidewalk there? What, what's the plan there? Does anybody know?
That would, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, it may be a part of our final development plan, but I, I don't have the answer to that, just because this is the vacation portion. But it may be part of our FDP for the...
I just want to get it out in the public right now. And Mark, do you have anything to add to that, sir?
Yeah, as far as the, the property in front of the Southwest Gas, that's actually has a special use permit that was proved probably back in 2003 timeframe. And at the time it came in, there were, because there was no development out there, they were given a little bit of leniency on when those offsites would come in, but there was an amendment to it that required offsites, and even landscaping, once water got in within 660 feet. To be honest, it, it was one of those things that kind of slipped through the cracks. When this came up before the Planning Commission discussion, Dale Daffron was part of it, and we're aware of it, and he's, Public Works is aware of it, and we're looking into that right now to see what we need to do to get proper offsite improvements in place and the landscaping, so.
My concern is, and I think maybe Councilman Churchill, is we, we build something nice, and we have kids riding on a sidewalk, and then they hit that, and then we're responsible if somebody gets hurt. Ms. City Manager, what do you think about that? Ms. City Manager, what do you think about that?
I'm glad to hear that Dale and them are looking into it, because clearly it looks like there's something there. I, I think that even though it, we might have not acted as soon as water came within six hundred feet, we still have that condition on there. We can go back to Southwest Gas and have them put on, put in those, um, offsite improvements. And I think that's, that's what we're doing. So I, I think it's a, a very good catch by, by, uh, Mayor and Counsel on making sure that there's continuity as we go through that project. And we'll, we'll make sure that we work on that as, as this moves along.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Madam City Attorney, what's your thoughts on this? Because I wanna, I wanna hear what you think, because obviously they're gonna have to get a letter from you, is that correct? So if they don't, if they don't follow the intent of the law in two thousand and, whenever they put that thing in there?
I mean, we'll get to that point if we need to, Mayor, but, um, I think that's what staff is taking care of right now, is to try and see if they can address that issue, and then we can take those steps if necessary.
Okay, so the counsel doesn't want that not to be finished. That's what you have to hear. Whether the city has to pick that up, or the Southwest Gas has to pick that up, we wanna be clear that that will all be done. Is that, are we okay with that, everybody? So, all right. Richard, you okay with that? Go ahead, you wanna say-
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I remember we discussed this last time, uh, and, uh, you had asked, uh, I think it was Mr. Gronauer to go ahead and, uh, contact Southwest Gas. Figuring he would, I didn't, uh, you know, we all have liaisons with the utilities, so, uh, but I'm happy to hear that, uh, staff and yourself are making, uh, an effort, because it would be, it would really be terrible to leave that portion dirt. And, uh, just as the mayor said, to have people walking along there, they need to have to go into the street to get on the other side of the sidewalk, or walk through the dirt. And of course, it's an eyesore otherwise.
I worry about the gutter with water, and you know, everything.
The washware.
The, the perfect plan would be for us to figure this out and pour the concrete at the same time all the way across, you know what I mean, so?
Well, with that on, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make sure to follow up with Bob on that as well, because he may have reached out to them, and I'm not aware of that, but I'll, I'll certainly talk to him about it.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, with that understanding, if there are no other questions, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, item number twenty-one, which is, uh, VAC dash zero-three dash twenty-twenty-two.
Counsel, any more comments or questions on this item? We have a motion. If not, then we'll go ahead and vote.
No, okay.
Items for-
For some reason, it comes up back with on my, my computer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to business.
Item number twenty-two, update on state of the city by Public Information Officer Linda Bridges.
Welcome, Ms. Linda.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, good evening. For the record, I'm Linda Bridges, Public Information Officer with the City of North Las Vegas Communications Team. A few weeks ago, we held our annual State of the City event on March thirty-first. I'll provide an update today on that event, beginning with our video, Growth by Design.
When I became mayor eight years ago, North Las Vegas was struggling. The city was on the brink financially, and development was at a standstill. Candidly, prospects for our future were few, and scenes like these were all too common. But since 2013, how things have changed. As we enter 2022, I can assure you that I not only look back with pride and satisfaction at our city's growth and development, but with excitement about our team, our partners, our stakeholders, and our residents have positioned North Las Vegas as the premier city in Nevada for generations to come. Isaac, good morning.
Good morning. Today, this Amazon Flex facility, just blocked from City Hall and buzzing with activity, is a perfect metaphor for what's been happening in our city. And this is just one of the nine Amazon facilities that now call North Las Vegas home.
Welcome, how are you doing?
Welcome to North Las Vegas.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Hey Pam, how you doing?
Hey Mayor, welcome to the new site of Neuro AI, just the latest high-tech company to join our fast-growing community. Neuro, say hi to the mayor.
Hi, Neuro, how you doing?
Neuro is a technology company that is not just pioneering autonomous delivery vehicles. They'll be testing, assembling, and deploying them right here in North Las Vegas. We'll soon be seeing Neurals navigating all over our roads. Mayor, meet Will.
Hi, Will.
Hi. North Las Vegas is the perfect match for Neuro with all of the logistics and tech companies that have settled here in just the past few years.
Do you suppose we could borrow Neuro for a bit, just to show what's going on around our growing thriving city?
Sure, why not?
Neuro, what do you say we take a quick drive down Craig Road? North Las Vegas is having by far and away the most dynamic and exciting growth of any in the state. Let's take a look at our exciting commercial industrial zones that have put us, North Las Vegas, at the economic forefront of Nevada. On their way, within the next two years, the new medical development zone adjacent to the VA Hospital. It will look completely different.
We're right next door to the VA Hospital and the two fifteen. Where you'll soon see one hundred and thirty-five acres of new medical, mixed-use office and retail development that will attract a whole new generation of professionals and biotech activity to our city. And if that doesn't seem likely, just look at what we've accomplished in just over the past eight years. Take the North Beltway Industrial Area by the Speedway. Nearly eleven hundred acres of warehousing, logistics, and fulfillment that have made North Las Vegas a national economic development envy.
And here at the northern end of the Speedway Industrial Park is an exciting company called Boxable. The manufacturer of these highly portable, low-cost modular homes is changing the face of low-cost residential housing. So, Neuro, let's cap off the last leg of our tour with what is probably the most exciting and significant development anywhere in Nevada, the Apex Industrial Park. Scott, how you doing, bud?
Oh, hey, Mayor.
Good to see you out here.
Good to see you.
This is just another great example of a problem solved by our tremendous city team and tremendous local contractors.
You're absolutely right, Mayor. Water has finally arrived here in Apex, and this land around here is beginning to bloom and boom with industry. As a matter of fact, we have billions of dollars in capital coming to our area with companies like Ball Corporation, Kroger, Van Trust, and many others.
Over the next twenty years, Apex will be the most dynamic industrial park in the United States, and will fuel the economic engine of this region and our state for generations.
Let's take a look.
I'm ready. For decades, Apex has held promise as a huge industrial magnet, but a breakthrough agreement championed by the City of North Las Vegas with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, the state, county, and the city have finally unleashed this project. Now, increasing demand from logistics, transportation, and fulfillment sectors, along with the arrival of technology and energy companies, is beginning to make Apex home to thousands of new jobs. Barely a year ago, Air Lique was just a plant on paper. Today, this green energy plant from France is bringing its hydrogen fuel cell manufacturing plant out of the ground, right here in North Las Vegas. And they will provide green power for millions of vehicles all over the country. Smart business leaders know how to line themselves with opportunity. They recognize that if they want to win, North Las Vegas is a place to do business. So you know, Neuro, I am so glad you decided to come here. It's partnerships like ours that will ensure North Las Vegas continues to be a city that's zooming into the future, constantly leading, innovating, and growing by design.
I love that video. Thank you, Madam Clark. Twenty twenty-two was the first year that we held State of the City.
About North Las Vegas, where I'm living now. Last time I did a video like this, um, I was staying closer to the Strip, and there was a lot of restaurants.
That's IT.
Sorry about that. So, twenty twenty-two was the first year that we held State of the City in person since early January twenty twenty. And it was a sold-out crowd. We sold seven hundred and thirty-six tickets, and we packed the Aliante Ballroom. This was also a great time to gather our business partners, local dignitaries, members of our community. They all attended to hear Mayor Lee's State of Our City and his final, um, State of the City as mayor of North Las Vegas. This year, State of the City garnered twenty-three on-air mentions, including on Eight News Now, News Three Today, and the coveted six PM newscast on Thirteen Action News. These stories were watched by over three hundred and sixty thousand TV viewers. State of the City was featured on thirteen local newspapers and national newspapers, including in Las Vegas, Connecticut, and in New York. All of these stories and mentions represent over seventy-three thousand dollars in advertising value. That is a whopping three hundred and seventy-nine percent increase over twenty twenty-one. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Dellen Goldberg, Patrick Walker, and Sandy Lopez, for amplifying the story of State of the City and really creating impactful reach amongst our local and national press. The success of this year's State of the City could not have happened without our committed partners, Aliante Casino, Hotel, and Spa, and their Director of Sales and Catering, Sherry Martinez. The video you saw earlier was produced by John Long and Clint Montgomery of Montgomery Media Productions. A big thank you to Mike Blank and his team at Neuro. He was able to get one of those Neuro vehicles to be delivered to Aliante and shown in the lobby. That was a huge hit, and really showed the forward momentum thinking of North Las Vegas. And finally, a huge thank you to Chris Holloway and his team at AV Vegas. Their professionalism in video, production, audio, the live stream, that huge screen that you saw behind the stage, they delivered all of that with perfection. We'd also like to thank Mitch Fox, who was our MC for the event, Councilwoman Pamela Goines Brown, who recited the Pledge of Allegiance, and Frank Pizarro, the retired New York City firefighter, who sang a moving rendition of the National Anthem. And last but not least, this year's event could not have happened without the internal North Las Vegas team led by Chief of Staff Rebecca Gibson. This team brought a positivity, a can-do spirit, and a willingness to go above and beyond to make this event what it was. I'd like to recognize Rizel Pebonito, Mark Hedges, Oaima Camo Calvo, Lori Glassford, Cynthia Keller, Candy King, Jessica McGowan, Claudia O'Malley, Linda Palladino, Cashie Polk, and Joy Adams. They were a tremendous team that day. Mayor and Counsel, thank you for your time today. Can I answer any questions?
Well, Isaac, we'll just go down the line.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. Um, again, um, you had a fantastic team, had great results. Is there such a thing as a, some sort of like an, uh, an Emmy or an Oscar for these types of, um, uh, State of the City, uh, uh, produ- productions?
Uh, yes, we can submit the video for awards, for sure, but unfortunately, there is no Oscar for this type of event.
Please submit. Please, please submit our entry.
I just wanna say thank you to all of you and all the people that you mentioned, and probably many, many more. That was really, uh, you know, understanding that we had to cancel first, and then reschedule to have a sold-out, uh, State of the City. Great work. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that, uh, the, the event, the video, and all that went into it really was just a great way to showcase our city, to tell a, a brief story of where we came from, but most importantly, where we're at today and what lays in our, in our future. And I think it was all portrayed very beautifully in that event, so thank you.
Guys, they say all I wanna say, and I'm going last here, but, you know, just understand where we are, you have to understand how we got there and the journey that it took. And each year gets better and better, and these videos get better and better. And so we just have to keep seeing how we're going to outdo ourselves year after year. So, just thank you to all the hard work and dedication that went into making this possible. And it's just so great when you have a sold-out crowd, because it's like they're watching, and they wanna see that our successes. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Richard, take that.
I, I just, uh, mentioned, uh, you know, the, the team that, uh, made us all look like we actually were able to read lines and memorize, uh, out there in the field. John did an amazing job putting all that together. So we, we appreciate, uh, all that he did and his team as well.
Yeah, so I just want everyone to know how proud I am that I listened to my wife, I threw those baggy pants away. I don't wear a leather coat anymore, Richard, you're the only person that looks good in leather coat. But it was a fine event. We were able to tell the North Las Vegas story, and our business partners were there. And, um, I think our community is very happy with the leadership of the city. So Linda, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, full liquor off-sale business license for Up and Spirits LLC, DBA Exo Liquor Lake Mead, eighteen-twenty East Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite A1, North Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-zero-three-zero.
Thank you. Mark?
Mayor, Counsel. As you know, this is a, a privileged license that's coming before this counsel. And in this particular case, staff's recommendation for this privileged license is for denial. Title five outlines several, uh, six items in which the counsel can consider in a decision for a denial request. And I'm gonna read all six of those items. Number one, in the judgment of the counsel, the granting of such a license may tend to create or constitute a public nuisance. Two, by grantings, the granting of such a license, a disorderly establishment may be maintained. Three, the granting of such a license may seriously and adversely affect the valuation of neighboring, joining, and our contiguous property. Four, the counsel after investigation is satisfied that the applicant is not a fit and proper person to operate the business contemplated by this application. Five, in the judgment of the counsel, there are ample and sufficient licenses and establishments in the area are placed for which the licenses be used to properly serve such area or place. And six, for any other good and sufficient reason. There are two land uses that cover the redevelopment areas of the city, the downtown business district and the downtown area of influence. Both of these areas cover approximately four square miles of the city. Presently, the city has approximately eighty establishments that are licensed for the full off-sale of alcoholic beverages. Approximately twenty-seven of those licenses are located within this four-square mile. Item five above states again, in the judgment of the counsel, there are ample and sufficient licenses and establishments in the area are placed for which the licenses be used to be used to properly serve such an area. Approximately thirty-four percent of the licenses within this city are located within this area. Therefore, there is an excessive concentration of businesses selling liquor in this area. An excessive concentration can impact the physical and emotional health of the community. In addition, the proposed license is located in Police Sector B-D five. D five consists- D5 consistently has more than double the number of police calls for services than any other boundary in the city. This high call of volume is a drain on city resources. Item one above, that I read earlier, states that, in the judgment of the council, the granting of such license may tend to create or constitute a public nuisance. The city strategic plan calls for a safe community where residents and visitors feel safe and are, feel safe in any neighborhood throughout the community. The excessive concentration of off-sale liquor licenses within this area only has the potential to further increase crime, cause residents and visitors to not feel safe in this neighborhood, and will tend to create a public nuisance. As a result, staff is recommending denial of this privileged license.
Let me, Alfredo, would you come up? We're going to have the staff's side of this and then your side, so you can hear everything.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The other item we wanted to cite is in Chapter V. It clearly states the approval of a location or a use permit does not guarantee or constitute approval of any liquor license. So you may hear from the applicant that there was a use permit issued, but until the mayor and city council actually approve a license, a privileged license is not approved. Further, this is in the downtown redevelopment area. There's a plan that's approved for the redevelopment area, and that is to have a local and regional destination with a unique identity, retain and support existing residents and local businesses, and improving the downtown's economic vitality, which is the new vision that we're seeing in the downtown. And for those reasons, I agree with what Mark stated in recommending denial.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more from City said we'll go to applicant? You need to, kind of next time, fill a card out.
I'm sorry. I filled the card out. I just wrote it on the wrong. I initialed the agenda item on the wrong place. I did fill out the card.
Oh, you know what? You did, and you're right.
I, well, wrong. I've initialed in the wrong place.
David, welcome.
Thank you. David Brown, 520 South Fourth Street. With me is the applicant Up in Spirits LLC. I have Solhiel Sharma with me, Amit Dingra, and DeShivir Singh. These are the three individual owners of this entity. We're here to ask you all to reconsider the denial. These are good people that tried to do everything the right way. The applicants are experienced operators. They have approximately 25 liquor-related businesses or 7-Eleven privilege licenses. In North Las Vegas, they have an Exo Liquor as well as a 7-Eleven. In Clark County, they have businesses. In Henderson, they have businesses. In the city of Las Vegas, they have businesses. All of those businesses, they completed the application and went about this the exact same procedural way. In their locations, they have some in good areas, some in bad areas. They have no problems with law enforcement. There's not one municipality or the county that would say these are bad operators, that they've brought bad stuff to the location. In fact, they have state-of-the-art security. They have a great relationship with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, as well as North Las Vegas Police Department. They make their cameras accessible to anyone who needs them from law enforcement, and they do everything they possibly can to cooperate. I understand the staff's position. Right now, it's a vacant lot. That shopping center, I would argue that the nicest business in that shopping center is a Carls Jr., and they have invested a significant amount of money into this business. They have never done anything to cause the city of North Las Vegas nor any other municipality concern. Let's talk about the process of what they did. In October of 2021, they had a land survey done. December 21, 2021, they submitted their SUP, and it was accepted. On December 28 of 2021, they were told by the city that they didn't need an SUP, that a conditional use permit was appropriate, and they were approved on February 9. And then, of course, they started construction. On February 9, the liquor license application was submitted. They paid approximately $21,100 to get that application going. On February 16, they applied for a sign permit. The permit was approved, and they paid over $9,000 for the sign company to get that started. On March 8, they submitted a walk-in cooler permit. That was approved. They spent over $100,000 on getting that, the cooler associated with it. Once the CUP was approved, they relied on it. I understand, to date, they've already spent over $250,000 out of their pockets to make this business start. In addition to that, they've had to sign a personal guarantee to a lease. That lease is approximately $780,000 if you take it over the life of 10 years. Of course, landlord has a duty to mitigate it, but as you guys all know that shopping, lady, all know that shopping center, there are several vacant properties in that center. So the chances of the entire shopping center getting leased right away are very low, and they're on the hook for $780,000. Being told, we were told that, the applicant, about March 16, the first time they learned there's a problem. They're told by the city, "We're not going to approve your application. We don't think it's right for the location." They're told that they should have gone forward with the business license application first. That's, we were retained later in the process. That's when we were retained. If you look at the code, Section 5.26.190 of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code states, "The licensee must commence operations of the business within 30 days after the license has been approved by the city council." It's not practical for anyone to get the license and open and develop the businesses like you want them to do and make them beautiful businesses, to do that within 30 days. No one, unless they just said, "Hey, we're just going to put a new sign on it and throw everything in here." To get a building permit, I think staff would support me. It would be impossible to do any real building and development within 30 days. In addition, they can't get a license without being able to pass all the inspections, the fire, the health, which everyone would want for the business to be open. I could tell you on another location for another client. I did the liquor store. We submitted the application. I came in right away with my client, as it's required here, to try to get the license, to submit at the same time. They said, "You can't even submit the liquor license application until you're about 45 days out to go ahead and get this license." So they did what everyone else does, and I heard him say 87. I would venture to guess the bulk of the 87 applicants with similar businesses did the exact same process that these gentlemen did, who are very experienced in the business. I would tell you, when you look at your website, the business licensing website, it says as clear as can be, before you sign a lease, you should make sure that you have the land use entitlement work done first. Make sure you have that. It doesn't say, "Make sure you're going to get approved for a business license before you're able to sign the lease." It tells you, "Just make sure you have the land use entitlements done." I understand the city's position, and it's a difficult one. And Mr. Sharma is going to speak about the neighborhood as well. We would just ask you to reconsider. These are good people. This is what North Las Vegas is known for, as being pro-business development. They're back here for, I believe, it's at least their third location because the first two experiences have been good. They did everything that you would expect an applicant to do, and now they're facing a denial and a substantial heartbreaking loss for the three of these individuals.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, all city staff, and citizens of North Las Vegas. Thank you very much. Just give us a chance to speak for this trouble we are in. Sir, I did everything by the book. Now you can say, you know, like, this seems like, like, you know, it's all became my fault. First, we get the land survey done. We were completely clear. I tried, they told me to go the special use permit. I tried to came the front. I was dated on February 6. I was supposed to be in front of you guys to, before I do anything. But on 28th of December, they changed their mind. They say, "Get the conditional use permit. You're good to go. There is no issue. There is no problem." Now I'm hearing all the, you know, issues came up. So after I get the conditional use permit, I say, "Mama said. I've been told you're all good. Just go to the city, pay your face, and, you know, different, different departments." So I went to, they referred me to the business department. I went to business department. They gave me a full checklist of every single item I did. We paid close to $30,000 just to get all those checklists satisfied. So we are all good. And I asked the lady, and she was a very nice person to help us out on that thing. She, I asked her, "What else next I need?" She said, "Nothing else. Only thing you need is a tobacco permit, and you're good to go." I said, "Okay." By the meantime, my sign guy came in. My signed permit, we got it. So the fees I paid for the city was $300-something, but my sign cost me nine grand. After them, they say, "You need a work, you need a permit for, what do you call that, a walk-in cooler." I went ahead, paid $309, but those was $100,000 liability. Now, all these approvals of great city of North Las Vegas stamps, again and again, everything was approved. Until March 16, the call I got, it just changed our world. So today, I'm in front of you guys, begging you just reconsider your situation on that because I would, in the first, if I would have denied, if I have any issue, believe me, I would walk away. I would say, "Thank you very much." In my last 13 years in Las Vegas, I got two twice. Got traffic ticket only. That's the minor I ever get any problem. One time, I was a little over the both side time. The officers I spoke to, you know, "Thank you very much. Sorry about that," you know? So if I have done the mistake on the first part, but this is by the rules, I cannot get license issued on a liquor license until I get my final inspection done. For getting the final inspection done, I have to have my sign. I have to have all the equipments. I have to have the store ready to open. And you know what, like, even fire department not going to do the final inspection unless their store is ready to open. Health department not going to do the inspection until their store is ready to open. Only thing we cannot put is the merchandise. That's the truth, sir. Like, besides that, I know a lot of people saying, you know, the fact, these are the facts I'm saying, but you know, now, the reason I was told by Mr. Alfredo on the day one that they changed their mind because too many homelesses, there is too many crimes in the area. But, sir, denying me this opportunity is not going to solve homeless problem. It's not going to solve the crime. Everything going to be, stay only this, but I'm going to be hooked for $100,000 equipment loans, the lease liability, and rest of the money what we lose from our pocket. So please reconsider it and see whatever you guys decide. Thank you very much for giving me a chance to talk.
And I think he speaks for the three of them in the interest of time. We do. And we just say, if the city, if the city had concerns and wanted conditions or something else, they would be open to it. We're just asking not to put these gentlemen completely out of business and let them lose all of the hard work and money they invested. Thank you.
Councilman Barone?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. You know, I can respect the amount of investment that you have in our community. It's nice to hear that you have so many different liquor establishments across the valley. And you have two more, obviously, in the city of North Las Vegas. That being said, I think that the testimony from our people here about the number of the establishments in the area, I think that speaks volumes. You yourselves have admitted, just did bring up something regarding attracting homeless to the area. That is something, of course, that, as you pointed out, that may or may not be something that you're, that we'll be fixing in any one particular way. But you did, but you did, again, did point out that your liquor store might actually attract more homeless to the area. In talking to residents, I do, I do get feedback. I just got one feedback here. No más licuarias en el distrito de Isaac, which translated, enough liquor stores in this area. I think I will accept the recommendation from staff. And unless anyone else wants to say anything, I think I will make a motion to deny this request. Unless, unless there's anybody else who wants to say anything.
Let me, let me move on real quick. Council, is there anybody else here that has questions or thoughts or wants to add into this? So Mark, where are we at on this now? They, there's obviously somebody wanting to comply, and they got caught. How does, what happens?
Well, at this point, if there's a decision by this council to deny it, you know, staff will cease everything. And it really puts it back in the applicant's court on what they're going to do with their, their relationship between themselves and the property owner. There would be no further action on staff's part. We would not issue a license for this. If there's a, I'm sorry, Mayor. If there's a decision by this council to deny this item, staff would cease processing the request for a business license.
Okay. Let me bring Jared up for a second. Jared, you out there somewhere, Economic Redevelopment Director? I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jared Luke, City of North Las Vegas. We have put extensive work into meeting with city management and looking at the overall vision for what to do with our downtown. There have been many testimonies in the past and current testimonies that the residents of North Las Vegas deserve the same toys, if you will, as everybody else in this valley. Our downtown redevelopment project is underway. When you look at the saturation numbers that Mark has read, it's obvious that we have a number of alcohol establishments, whether it's beer and wine or full off-sale liquor. And we have some concern, not only from residents, but from businesses that are looking into coming into the downtown with the revamping of medical industry. That this is a concern. It's very much a concern from the financing end for, for new businesses and for the revamping of the medical services that we so desperately need in our downtown. So I side with Mark and with Alfredo and the rest of staff in recommending denial of this license.
It was brought up about homelessness and crime in the area. I don't know, can you have any ideas on crime in the area? I don't know that information.
Actually, yes. Chief Harris has some data on crime, actual numbers of police calls in this area specific to this address. The concern is that when you couple that with a, with a new off-sale liquor license store, that those numbers may increase.
Chief, would you come up? First up, I didn't know there was very much crime in North Las Vegas, so...
We do our best, Mayor. Captain Mike Harris, North Las Vegas Police Department. I can only speak to the crime in, or only prepared to speak to the crime in this specific area, in particular, 1820 East Lake Mead, which is the shopping center that the proposed store is wanting to go to. Between January 1, 2020, and December 31, 2021, roughly that two-year period in the height of COVID-19, where a large portion of that businesses were shut down, we had, from the nightclub area over there and alcohol-related establishment, 90 incidents and calls for service. And those were everything from property checks, person stops, traffic stops, domestic disputes, fight calls, thefts, stolen vehicles, disturbances, suspicious situations, narcotics, firearm-related incidents, and others. That was specifically related to that, related to that location. There are 162 total calls to that address altogether, with, again, a period of that time being shut down. It's my opinion that alcohol will just further exacerbate the problem of crime in that area. The, the problem of homelessness was already brought up, and that too will, will attract homeless to that area, most likely. And based on that, I would probably have to agree with, with staff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, also, I'm hoping to add.
Councilman Barone?
Yeah, there's already a liquor establishment in, I mean, right next to it. There is already a nightclub that sells liquor right next to it, to the point of the saturation that, that Mr. Jordan pointed out. Maybe they didn't notice it, but it's a really big sign. Trincón Nayarit. Again, the area already has issues with, some might be already related to alcohol. It makes very little sense, again, to approve yet another establishment next to a site that is literally selling the same substance. And you have several businesses in the very near area that also sell this substance.
Mayor, can I comment just because that was opened up?
No, no, David. What we're going to do is that you finish, and then I'm going to call for public comments if anybody else is here too. But would you like to speak now, or?
I'll wait if there's any other public comments.
Yeah, let me, okay, so I'm going to open up public comment right now. Is there anybody here from the public? Or do we have any blue cards, or anybody on the phone?
No, sir.
We have no one?
The phone number, the phone is not working.
Okay. All right, so, good. So we are going to close the public comment period, David, and give it back to you.
Thank you. And again, I'll be very brief. Obviously, we would submit that a liquor store... Obviously, we would submit that a liquor store is significantly different than the tavern, and they would say that the reason we think we're having this issue is because the tavern, completely unrelated business, has been a nuisance to, uh, the police department. I was here in the day where they tried to expand and it was denied, uh, but that has nothing to do with these gentlemen, and I think a more appropriate measure would be on their location on Martin Luther King, which is a similar related business, a similar neighborhood, and they don't have those kind of calls, they don't have those kind of problems. You don't have people, they don't allow people to drink the drinks there in the parking lot. The homeless aren't because of the liquor store, it's the shopping center right now has the homeless, because there are a number of different businesses that are empty, and the inactivity all day, really, there's the Carl's Jr., there's the tavern, which doesn't open at night, but with them being open at the day, they would do that, and as we discussed before in the conditions, they would make efforts, whether it be, you know, security sweeps, whether, whatever it need to be, to try to eliminate the, those issues. Uh, but I don't think it's fair to measure them to a tavern where people are gonna, you know, lack of better word, get drunk, uh, with their friends and do things. No one get, no one drinks there. They don't even sell ice. You can't have a, a drink at their property. They do everything they can the right way, and as we did hear staff and the police department tell them what the concerns are, but we haven't heard anyone tell them what they did wrong. Uh, they did everything the way you would expect them to do it, and we understand that the city doesn't necessarily want another one of these businesses, but it shouldn't be that these gentlemen are the one group of people penalized when they tried their hardest and they're good citizens.
I'm, I'm gonna ask another question. Has anybody got anything else they wanna ask on here? So, I don't know much about this nightclub. Can you explain to me what's going on there in the evenings, or the, you know, whatever that is?
Uh, it's, um, it's a bar. Um, I've actually, uh, been to the bar with our police department. Um, uh, one time, I showed up, uh, on a ride-along, and, uh, the police officers actually found, uh, several, uh, young, underage drinkers there, whom, uh, they cited, and they cited also the bartender. Um, but I think, uh, I, I, I think, uh, Counselor Brown is correct, you know, uh, whether, uh, is it really, is their application related to the bar? No. But in the end, i- it's not a question whether these are good people or not. I'm sure they're fine businessmen. I'm sure they ha, they have a good product. In the end, it is up to the city to decide whether a, uh, business is right for the area, and whether the, the city can build a community, and where you want to have the community ten and twenty years down the future. I, uh, am going to, again, um, accept the recommendation from staff, that there is already a saturation of businesses in this area, and therefore, uh, I'm gonna make it a, 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 yet another, um, then, another motion to deny this application.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, it's been accepted, but I just wanna...
Mayor, Counsel, if I may, before my decision is made, I would, uh, like to add that I would recommend that in your motion, that the council find that denial is appropriate under North Las Vegas Municipal Code five point two-six point oh-one-oh, subsections one, five, and six, that I talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'd like to add that, uh, to my motion.
Okay. Any other, I'm gonna take away from the council here, is anybody else wanna speak on this issue? Okay, we have a, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor right now to deny this license. An affirmative yes would be to support that motion. So a no would be the opposite. So go ahead and please cast your vote. Motion has been accepted.
Thank you very much.
Moving on?
Item number twenty-four, pass and adopt resolution number two-six-nine-two, resolution of City of North Las Vegas, establish North Las Vegas Charter Committee and the bylaws thereof, and providing other matters properly related there, too.
Thank you. Welcome, Miss. Leo, how you doing?
Hello, Mayor Lee and members of the council. My name's Leonardo Benavides, Government Affairs Manager. Uh, thank you for having me here today. Uh, I just wanna note that today, we are presenting resolution number two-six-nine-two. This is as a result of the twenty-twenty-one legislative session, uh, AB fifty-five, which alongside with making changes to the North Las Vegas City Charter, required the city to form the charter committee. The committee will be charged with reviewing the city charter and making any recommendations for necessary amendments to the city council. There would be at least one meeting every even number year, with extra meetings able to be called, if necessary, by the chairperson, staff advisor, or simple majority of the committee. The committee will be made up of thirteen members, seven appointed by the city council, and six appointed by the Nevada Legislature. Each member must be a registered voter of the city and reside in the city during his or her term, as well as serve without compensation. Terms of members are concurrent with the person or persons who have appointed them. Seven members are needed to fulfill a quorum, and of the members present, two-thirds need to vote in support of any recommendation made to the city council. The chairperson will then need to make a presentation of the committee's recommendations to the city council. Alongside with me, I have Ms. Rian Jarvis-Denman for answering any questions and answers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this charter committee was somewhat discussed at the legislature, and it's got city support on it, and it's got legislative support on it. Did you mention how the board would be constituted? Did I miss that, or did you mention that?
Yes. Um, as I mentioned, seven members will be appointed by the council, two by the mayor, two by the mayor pro tempore, and then one each from the remaining council members. The six from the legislature will be two from the majority party on the senate side, two from the majority party on the assembly side, and then one each from the minority party on both houses.
And this mirrors other charter committees in the state, is that correct, Rian? I don't know.
Correct. Legislation, uh, the original legislation mirrors what happened with the Henderson Charter Committee, and these bylaws were also drafted with that, that in mind as well.
So in between the sessions, there's a year that really nothing really happens, you still must have a charter committee that year, um, even though there, there might be nothing to discuss?
Uh, Mayor, for the record, Rian Jarvis-Denman, Deputy City Attorney. Yes, so the meetings need to occur in the year that the session is not, it, not happening, so it's even-numbered years. Uh, that way, if the charter committee has any recommended changes to the charter, those can be presented to council as a recommend, recommendation to use those as a BDR, uh, to take to the legislature for the next session. And that occurs at the end of the summer, so the BDRs are due to the Legislative Council Bureau by September first.
Yeah, so if the charter committee comes up with an idea that they want, and the city council and city manager doesn't want that, we just don't ask for a BDR? Or do we, I'm thinking the city manager brings stuff to them, and then they work on the city's manager's agenda. How, how do you see this, Leo?
Sorry.
As chairman of government, you know, as, as government affairs, your position?
Uh, yes, so, uh, the city could recommend, uh, an item to be changed for the charter, to bring for the charter committee's attention, and then the committee can vote on if they wanna make that approval or not, and then the city can decide whether they wanna bring that as a BDR or not.
And then would that, would that come back to the council?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure that we all know, everything runs through the city manager, moves this way, moves to the council, and discussion will be had, and the charter committee is there for, um, to observe what we're doing and report to the legislature that everything is done as proper as possible.
Correct.
That's how you see it? Okay. So when are you gonna fill this committee, that, if we vote on it today? How does that work now?
We are working right now to fill the appointments from the council side, which will be coming on the next, uh, city council meeting on May eighteenth, and then we're working as well with legislative leadership of the Nevada delegation, uh, to send us their, uh, appointment as well.
And you're hoping to have this, they're completed by when?
We're hoping to have the first meeting on, by the last Monday of June.
Would we come back to the board to approve the members of the committee?
For the city council, not for the legislative side.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm getting at, so, okay. So is there any comments or questions from the council on this?
Yeah, Mayor, um, I'm, I'm really happy to, uh, to be receiving this and having an opportunity to vote on this. Uh, you know, of course, as a public school teacher, and of course, my colleague is, uh, another educator, uh, we've known for a long time just how important, uh, education is our, to our, i- is to our community. We're actually, I'm very happy that we have, uh, a better say in the, in the direction of education in our community, and I know for me, there's gonna be something that I'll be very happy to support.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? We'll let that be a motion. Go ahead and make an official motion, no, but...
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. We have motion to approve and adopt resolution number two-six-nine-two. All in favor?
This thing's kinda hinky. I think I accidentally voted, uh, no against it. So, and it's supposed to be a yes. Uh, uh, okay, I think maybe I did. This thing's even worse than my phone.
I, good job, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinance, says introduction only.
Item number twenty-five, introduce ordinance number three-one-one-four, an ordinance related to zoning, amend the existing PUD planned unit development district containing approximately eight-point-five-three acres, CN forty-two-zero-one-nine, Low Mountain and Low Sea, consisting of fifty-one residential lots and one commercial lot of properties generally located in northeast corner of Low Mountain Road, northwest corner of Low Mountain Road and Low Sea Road, and providing for other matters properly related there, too. Item number twenty-six, inter, introduce ordinance number three-one-one-eight, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately fifteen-point-one-nine acres from a C-one neighboring commercial district to a PUD planned unit development district, CN dash zero-six dash two-zero-two-two, Tropical Low Sea, consisting of one-hundred-and-ninety-six lot, a multifamily town, townhome subdivision for property located on the south, southwest corner of Low Sea Road and Tropical Parkway, and provided for, for other matters properly related there, too.
Thank you, Ms. Goins Brown, you got some stuff happening over there. Good girl. Moving on to appointments.
Item number twenty-seven, appoint Barbara Arbuckle as a trustee to the Library District Board of Trustees to fill vacancy for term expiring on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much. So we'll call for a motion to appoint Ms. Barbara Arbuckle to the Library District Board of Trustees. Chair, take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number twenty-eight, reappoint city council member Pamlet Goins-Brown to the Southern Nevada Enterprise Community Board for a three-year term from October seventh, twenty twenty-one to October sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Goins-Brown, you wanna do this?
I do.
Uh, well, we have a good member of a committee there. The count, the chair will take a motion to reappoint her to the Southern Nevada Enterprise Community Board.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Point to get today.
Items approved. Moving on to city manager's report.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor and Counsel.
Moving on to the second public forum. Now is the time set aside for the public to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight, but were within the jurisdiction and control of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during this second public forum may be deliberated on, acted upon by the city council tonight. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or city staff for actions by the city council later date. I have one blue card here, and is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, besides Mr. Richard Gomez, to please come up and address the council? Mr. Gomez? And if anybody else wants to, you can just come up right behind him.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak before you today. I'm a resident, um, of, of North Las Vegas, and, and I applaud, well, let me, let me give you some background. I'm a veteran of twenty-eight years in the, the Air Force. I hold the Master of Business Administration in aviation, so I understand the logistics of what you're bringing to the, and I, and I applaud that. However, there are underlying concerns of public administration that come along with that, and that's what I'm bringing here today. I live at, or near MLK and Gowan. MLK and Gowan is a raceway. There is no police presence whatsoever on there to stop these consistent speeders and reckless driving there. I have given the North Las Vegas Police Department intelligence on a guy that lives two doors down from me, that drives a Pontiac G-eight with a Corvette engine in it, that races up and down and all over North Las Vegas, but nothing's being done about that. To the amount of unlicensed cars with no license plates means to me, as a citizen, that my insurance rates are gonna go up because they're not licensed, they're not registered, and that's not, and that, and that's not right. It's not fair to us as, as citizens for that. Um, third, my, the street that I live on is used as a shortcut between Gowan and ML, to go to MLK South, okay? The traffic on that street is akin to Gowan itself. I mean, fifty, sixty cars, it, for each particular rush hour, right? And, um, when we come into the subdivision, and, and I apologize, I wanted to submit, you know, some graphics and stuff for that, 'cause I can do that sort of thing, but when I went to go onto the webpage to submit those, I got a four-oh-three error, four-zero-three error, I could not submit the form. What they do is they come into the subdivision, and please pardon my expressions, they blow the stop sign as soon as they come in, they turn left, there's one little tiny speed hump, which is nice, but when, as soon as they turn that corner to come onto Becca Faith, they punch it. I mean, the, the, the parents will not let their children, uh, play in the streets because it's, it's dangerous. I have a dog that's disabled, and he was, um, born without front legs. So what I do is I tow him around in a wagon in the subdivision, and I've gotta keep, you know, from, when I was in the service, I'm in fighter jet maintenance, so I speak kinda fighter pilot stuff, um, I have to keep my head on a swivel, because I don't know who's coming, where they're coming from, how fast they're going to drive, if they have their lights on at all. It's dangerous, and, um, along with bringing all that business into North Las Vegas and that money, comes, and please forgive me, but the city is physically dirty. When you walk out the front door here, you're gonna see plastic bags, trash, right? Part of the work that I did when I was in, in the service was, uh, in, in contracting oversight of, of a government contracts and for fighter aircraft maintenance. I would encourage the city to perhaps consider hiring some contractors to go into the shopping centers, to clean those places out, because every time we go shopping at the shopping centers, it's, it's filth. I'm, I'm sorry, I, and I applaud, I applaud you. You, you asked very, very good questions and pertinent questions to the subjects at hand. However, these are some things that, at, from a citizen's perspective, absolutely must be addressed, because, because, um, with the business comes people, comes vehicular traffic and everything, and ultimately, the house that I live on on Becca Faith, a butts MLK, and it is so loud, so noisy. I would love to see ultimately, although it's an eyesore for sure, um, the, the tall wall.
Sound wall.
A sound wall, so, yes, sir. So, these are some of the things, and I'd be happy to, um, sit with anybody, anytime, anywhere, to discuss these, these things in detail, and thank you for giving me the extended time to talk about this. But, you know, from, from a, you know, just a guy's perspective, in a subdivision on MLK and Gowan, it's, um, respectfully, it's not a pretty picture, you know?
Well, we, um, we can understand that there is those people speeding. It's, it's been known, we're working on, the city manager's sitting right there in front of you, and the traffic engineer's sitting right there. Would you guys meet with him afterwards and get an idea of what he's talking and his opportunities we can to serve that community a little bit better? And then they'll meet you off here to the side. Would that be okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. But we understand, uh, we want you to be a happy resident of the council.
I appreciate your understanding.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and address the council? Seeing known, we're gonna close the public comment, and this meeting's adjourned.